Me?
Yes.
Yep.
Cool. Good evening.
All right, it's April 6, 2021, 7:30 PM, gonna call the a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. A roll call on the line right now is Doug Roberts, Lori Stenfrevon and Joe Hall and myself. No applications to be received tonight, so brings us to item D, Public Hearing, PZ-21-11, a three lot re-subdivision application, 59 Latham Road, applicant Edward Pelletier, owner Michael Nogus.
Try to answer some of those right now.
And we have Bob Shabbitt, looks like he joined us, so. Okay, the public hearing's open, anybody here?
Yeah, I'm here, Edward Pelletier.
Okay, you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing and?
Yep, it's, if you know where Mike Nogus lives on Latham Road, these are three lots to the north of that, including his house, so his house is lot three, which is originally lot three in the previous year approved subdivision. Lot four and five would be two new lots being created, so there's really two new lots and one existing lot.
Didn't we talk about this like a couple of years ago when the process started?
Yeah, it was actually, we had submitted the application for wetlands and then the mortuary came on. So everything kind of went on hold. And at that point, it was a six lot subdivision and we never followed through with that. It went through wetlands, I believe, and that was it.
You're all set with wetlands, we have the approval?
Yeah, for this three lot subdivision, which is really a re-subdivision of lot three, yes, we have wetlands approval. We have Health Department approval also. It's only 6.7, 6.94, I think, or 7.4, let me think, I don't know what it was. I think it was six point, total of 6.94 acres.
And how large is each lot, each building lot?
Um, I can tell you that. Lot one is going to, well, lot three is going to be eighty seven thousand, one hundred and thirty eight square feet. Lot four is going to be eighty seven thousand, four hundred and twenty square feet and lot five would be one hundred and twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty six square feet. So they're all, they're all, you know, decent size. Again, this is relatively good soils, all sand. There's really no, no issues with the soils, that's why the Health Department had no problems with it. Lot three, the original lot three of Mike's house on is all, is all clear, the other two are wooded. Four and five would be wooded.
Okay, any, any questions from anyone else on the commission? Mike, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, so I guess I just mentioned, so yeah, it's a re-subdivision as he, as he pointed out, which is why we have to have a public hearing. Statute requires that if you're, if you're re-subdividing a property that was part of a subdivision, you have to hold a hearing. So just to confirm, it did go through, it did go through wetlands, I think in February. So there are some comments that were provided from the town engineer. He provided some responses, so I haven't had a chance to go through all those yet, which is why I don't have a motion. But I don't have any, any outstanding concerns at this point.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with this, I live right around the corner on Timber, so I go by this all the time. And I remember the discussions from two years ago and even before that with, with this. Okay, anything else from the commission?
No, not for me, Walter, I remember it also.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago.
It was relatively straightforward then, it's just a guesser before us because of the re-subdivision on one of the lots.
Uh, I, I just, I just have one comment.
Go ahead.
I noticed a comment to Mike, comment number one about open space. And it states that the, over a certain amount of time, that twenty eight point nine five acres have been donated for conservation. I was wondering how many of those acres are buildable?
Well, your, your regulations have a format for which we have to abide by regarding wetlands versus non-wetlands. So that was adhered to when we dedicated the open space.
Okay. So you haven't got the figures, how much was?
Well, I do. Let's see, there was a total open space parcel was, on this section was, I guess it was, I think this is for the overall property, three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and fourteen square feet, which seven thousand, six hundred and six square feet was wetlands, which is two point five percent.
Okay. I was, I was just curious if you had those figures.
Yeah, but your regulations kind of dictate how much we have to give of open land, you know, good land anyways.
Yep. Okay.
All right, at this time, any questions or comments from the public? Once, once again, any questions or comments for the pub, from the public on this? Okay, I'm gonna take that as a no. Mike, you have anything else to add to this?
Uh, no, so like Bob pointed out, one of the things that I want to look at, the sub, this is a re-subdivision, but it's not expanding the total amount of land that was developed, which is basically to his point of feeling like they've given enough land. So I, I've got to work through some of just the math on some of these outstanding comments, so if the commission feels they're comfortable, if they want to close and move it to opens for the next meeting, I can go through everything and have a bit, bit of a report and suggested motion.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see if you put a motion together, Mike.
Yep.
All right, does anyone on the commission see any reason to keep this public hearing open? I don't.
I don't.
No, I don't.
I don't, I don't, Walter.
Hey, I'm gonna make a motion to close Public Hearing, PZ-21-11?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, public hearing closed. Onto item B, PZ-21-13, modification of special permit to add illumination to signage at 11 Phelps Way. Applicant Greg Bristow, BTB Realty of Wellington LLC. This sounds familiar. I think we talked about this. All right, so go ahead. Ready, Greg?
Did you, Walter, I don't know why, a minute ago you got quieter, did that have me listed as the owner?
Owner BTV Realty, applicant Greg Bristow.
Yeah, okay, I'm the applicant, not the owner.
Yeah, owner is BTV Realty.
Yeah, DVT.
Yep.
Yeah, so real simple, we just want to take what we did last time. We applied for everything to be opaque backgrounds, so in other words, the backgrounds of the pylon sign out at the road would not illuminate at all. And only the letters and logos would light up. And for the building signs, with those are going to be external illumination from gooseneck lighting. And what we want to do is just change the building signs and the pylon sign over to standard low intensity illumination, just like the Dunkin Donuts sign by the road.
So the building signs are not going to be gooseneck lights now, they're going to be illuminated?
Internal illumination, yeah, yep.
Why the change of heart?
Uh, because a couple of different reasons, it'll be a better look, it'll look nicer. And the, there's a, there's kind of a fascia along the front of the building where the signs will go. And we didn't want the signs to really be maxed out height wise, top to bottom. And even keeping the signs at a very reasonable height so that the face of the building looks nice, yeah. So you see, if you look at Wellington Pizza House two there, that, that proposed sign we did, that sign is only two feet tall, which isn't very big. And, but if you go larger, it, it just becomes a little obnoxious on that fascia and it doesn't have a classy look. We wanted to keep it a little more elegant and it doesn't give us really any room to mount gooseneck lighting. So it's not that great of an option and Bill and Katie feel like the internally illuminated is a better way to go. It'll be more visible, it'll look nicer, so they wanted to change it over.
Okay, Mike? Mike, I have a question for you, Mike Tomato?
Yeah.
Mike, this, this, meet our regulations, what they're proposing?
Yeah, so hold on, let me, so I know that mute some people here. Um, so even though last time they, they, we talked about illumination, there was no illumination that was proposed. So this hearing is basically to add illumination to the property.
Well, there was illumination on the road sign last time.
And there was a proposal that possibly they want to do gooseneck lighting.
Yeah, we do gooseneck lighting at a later date, but it was part of the proposal last time is we would add gooseneck lighting later on.
So just give me, bear with me one second, if you want, I just got to pull up the regs if, I don't know if anybody else has questions while I, while I go through that.
And when I say later on, nobody ever defined later on, I just said later on. And we didn't want to define it because they've just got a ridiculous amount of work to do trying to get that property cleaned up and it's something that Bill wanted to do, but don't know whether that would take, you know, two or three months or six months or 12 months. So we just said, you know, later on, we'll do that, not sure when. And I guess the other side of that too is, you know, money doesn't grow on trees and he's got a lot of empty space there, so.
Okay. So we have a, a section in the regulations under signage for illumination, it says any illuminated sign in which the background, as opposed to the text, is illuminated by means of an internal light source through a translucent or transparent material. And that falls under prohibited signs. Um, we have, it's kind of scattered throughout, so I'm trying to pull it together.
Wait, say that again?
Um, there you go. Come on. All right, so this is under some prohibited signs. And it says any illuminated sign in which the background as opposed to the text is illuminated by means of an internal source through a translucent or transparent material.
All right, well, illuminate the text, correct?
Can I, can I have it for a second here?
Can you have what?
Guys, so when we originally proposed the lighting, the internal illumination for the pylon sign last meeting, I had proposed opaque backgrounds, which is exactly what Michael's saying. You have to have opaque backgrounds and the lettering and logo only can be illuminated. And we proposed it that way because I thought that's what we had to have for Wellington. Well, in emails back and forth, a few weeks back with Michael, and I have this all in email, I had proposed, I told him I wanted to do, I told him and Ashley, I wanted to do the same thing for the building. And, and I forget how you worded it, but you said, hey, I'm, you're talking about the opaque backgrounds, but it doesn't say that you have to do that. And I said, okay, cool, then we won't do opaque backgrounds, we'll just do, you know, normal. And I said, plus, I have a major concern that the Dunkin Donuts sign, which is brand new, um, which is visible from the parking lot of the Phelps Crossings Plaza, the background of that sign is not opaque. Wait, and, and somebody argued with me on, in the last meeting that, you know, and I said something about it being opaque and I don't remember who it was and somebody spoke up and said, no, it is, but it's, and, and at this point, I'm willing to speak up because it's going to cause problems. The background of that sign is not opaque, it's very black and white, by definition, it's not opaque, it lights up brown at night. Opaque means the background does, you know, opaque means it does not light up. And what you're telling me now, which is not what you told me in email back and forth, have it all in writing. You told me that we can do normal illumination as long as it's low intensity. Now I'm finding out right now that no, we can't do that. But the Dunkin Donuts sign is actually not an opaque background sign. And I sent Michael and Ashley an email and said, hey, I got a major concern here because this is going to cause huge headaches for both Bill and I, dealing with his incoming new tenants. When we say, hey, you've got to spend a bunch of money to, to, you know, more, make way more money than a normal lighted sign face to make the background completely opaque. And they're going to look across the road and say, well, how come that sign's not opaque, it's brand new? And I don't want to deal with that, nor does Bill, it's, it's, it's ridiculous, you know, because you're asking a tenant to pay and he's trying to fill these tenant spaces that are empty, he's got forty percent of his building empty. So I said, well, hey, instead of doing opaque backgrounds, let's just do normal low intensity illumination, just like the Dunkin Donuts sign across the street, and he said, okay, that's cool. Now I'm signing into this meeting and finding out that the regulations do state what I thought they stated, that we have to do opaque backgrounds. So, and I say I'm confused, I'm not confused, it sounds like, I'm not the one who's confused, I had it right to begin with. And I'm being getting, I'm getting, being told cross information here.
I'm not sure your definition of opaque is, I, I'm not sure, what did you say you thought opaque meant?
No, it's not, and I think, I've been doing this 26 years, if you look it up, opaque background means light does not pass through. So that means it does not light up, not low intensity lighting or not dark colors, but in plain English or in the sign industry, an opaque background means the background does not light up. No light passes through, zero, not a small percentage, but zero. And if that's what we need to do, that's fine, but that brings up another concern about the Dunkin Donuts sign across the street. Because if that's what the town regulations are, how do we get our tenants to abide by those regulations which actually cost them more when the brand new tenant across the street, Dunkin Donuts, put up a sign that is not an opaque background? Very clearly not an opaque background, it lights up dark brown. And I knew that ahead of time and I said something about it in the last meeting and somebody fought me on it and said, no, 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 it's opaque. And I didn't want to argue because I don't, I don't like to stir the pot and rustle feathers if I don't need to, but this is going to cause me and Bill a lot of headaches.
So I, I'm, I'm trying to refocus here, I'm unsure about what we're currently debating at this point, you know, I, we went back and forth an awful lot and if, and if you have something from me that's incorrect or unclear, then that's, that's my, that's my bad. What Dunkin Donuts has, has unfortunately no bearing on what this commission can do with this sign. If we have a reg, a regulation that says X, I, I don't know, I wasn't here when Dunkin Donuts was approved. So I don't know what that process was, what the sign was approved looking like, if they got a variance, if they had non-conforming sign protections that they used, I don't know. But this, this regulation, nineteen point oh three point oh eight is, is what we're currently talking about. The previous discussions, we talked a lot about lighting at the last application, but there was no approval given by this commission for any lighting at the last, at the last application. So any representations made by members of the commission or me or you, the reason why you're here is to add illumination to that permit, so there's no approvals that were granted previous that were modifying related to lighting specifically. So you know, I think what Lori was trying to talk, to kind of bring up is this idea of is translucent, the same thing as opaque? Is it trying to regulate something different or, or regulate something that is, that is a different type of sign than what you're talking about proposing? You know, I'm not sure the commission's been around longer than I have to know historically how they've read that. But I just want to be clear on kind of what, what we're discussing.
So the pylon sign last time, and you, you guys understand that when I say the pylon sign, I'm talking about the, the, the two signs out by the road, right?
Yes.
All right, so the pylon sign or signs plural, the pylon signs last time in writing were proposed as internally illuminated pylon signs with opaque backgrounds. So the, and, and you had told me those were approved. So all I want to change now for the road signs from what was approved last time is just non-opaque backgrounds. And we wanted to do that because it would, it'll look great. And it's what's across the street and you had told me that we could do that. And then for the building, we just want to change from external gooseneck illumination to internal illumination. If we have to go opaque backgrounds, we can, and I mean, I've been doing this a long time, I completely understand that, hey, look, if planning and zoning changed a regulation yesterday and you're looking for a sign permit today, then what was done the day before yesterday by your neighbor is completely irrelevant. But if that reg, the, the problem, and, and I bring this up because I've seen this many times in the past, is I thought the regulation for opaque backgrounds had been around for a while in Wellington.
It has.
It has. It has been.
Okay, thank you.
So that, so then, you know, something may have snuck by with the Dunkin Donuts, I don't know, it's pretty, that was not brand new, that's probably about four years ago at least. And maybe something got snuck through that wasn't how it was supposed to be, but you have to look in the application. But yeah, we can't sit here and violate the zoning regulations that we have, they have to be changed. That, that's not a quick process and I'm not sure we want to.
Understand.
They went round and round with this with roadway. The hotel down at TA about, you know, internally lit and they had to be opaque. And they ended up having to change their sign because they swapped signs and it didn't meet regulations.
Ralph, you want to speak?
I didn't real, I didn't realize I was unmuted, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I didn't have anything to say.
Okay. But yeah, this is the, it's pretty clear in the regulations what, what it's saying, that's why I asked the question, Mike, whether the signs were allowed when he started to talk.
Well, the opaque backgrounds is fine, that's what we originally applied for with the road sign, was internal illumination with opaque backgrounds. So then really all tonight boils down to is changing the building signs to the same exact thing, which meets regulations, so it shouldn't be a problem. No?
As long as it, it meets regulations, I, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, you're basically moving from a proposed or, you know, in the future gooseneck to internal lighting. And as long as the internal lighting is in compliance with our regs, you know, we're on the same, we're both headed on the right lane on the highway.
So I personally think it'll make a big difference in the plaza, it'll look good.
Exactly.
Compared to what's there now, I, I have no objections to it whatsoever, as long as it follows the regulations. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners before I get, go to the public?
Uh, my, my only comment is with Dunkin Donuts, have they changed their sign out? I mean,
No.
No?
No, it's the same one that's been up since, since they built the, the, since they built it over there. And yeah, I know, I'm calling it brand new, which, you know, I've been driving by it for a very long time, to me, it's still kind of new.
Well, I, I pull in for a coffee all the time and I, I don't even notice the sign anymore, you know?
Well, I, I, I get up really early in the morning and I drive by it in the pitch black, probably three, four mornings a week, so I, I notice it.
Yep.
Any, any questions or concerns from the public?
Michael's doing some digging.
This is the Dunkin Don't?
Brown, brown background and orange border to be opaque. Up in the notes on the right hand side.
Yep, I see it. It's not opaque.
Okay.
I don't want the commission to think that they just approved something that was not in compliance with the regulations, so this was a, this was, this was done back in 2015, so about six years ago.
Okay, so my memory's bad, I thought it was four.
Well, COVID, COVID, that one year doesn't count, so you're only a year old.
I like that mentality.
All right, so it was supposed to be, and if it doesn't fit, made the letter of the law for what an opaque background is, that's, wasn't because we weren't looking at what we had at the time.
Well, the issue is, so you guys understand just a small amount of conversation here, you know, from my perspective, dealing with a, dealing with a tenant and from Bill's perspective, to make a sign, a lighted sign face truly opaque by definition, um, it's, you know, the, the background opaque, it's a much more expensive sign face than what it should be. And this is why that face is what it is and it wasn't made completely opaque, they skipped a couple of steps and they skaved, saved a couple of bucks. Um, so, you know, it can get to be a little bit of a nightmare later on and it could turn into a little bit of a mess for you guys as well. You know, where, let's just say, I've got a good relationship with Bill and he sends his tenants to me directly and says, hey, use Greg, don't talk to anybody else. And they get a lighted sign face quote from me, that's a thousand dollars, and they get one from somebody else that's six hundred and fifty bucks. And you try to explain to them that, hey, it's a truly opaque background, it's what makes Wellington happy. And they look across the street and go, hey, you know what, screw them. Um, if that sign over there is okay, then it doesn't need to be, you know, perfectly opaque, I'm going to go with this six hundred and fifty dollar option and screw Bill too. Um, and it sounds a little rash, but I can promise you that's exactly how it goes down on a regular basis. Um, so, and then what happens is you have tenants with, you know, once you have one duck that's wandered off across the street in the wrong direction, you're going to have other ducks that follow. That's just human nature, especially when it's cheaper. Uh, so I'm just, I've, I've seen that, I see it all the time, so I'm just trying to do what I can to prevent that ahead of time, you know, and, and I understand that the, the answer might be, hey, I don't know what to tell you. Um, that got screwed up, it was, it was set up as regulation, it was set up to meet P and Z regs and the manufacturer didn't meet code. The problem with that is then a tenant can say, well, did the town do anything to them? No, well, then screw it, give me the six hundred and fifty dollar face. You know, and that puts Bill, both Bill and I in an odd position, you know, where there's a You know, and that puts Bill, both Bill and I in an odd position, you know, where there's a sign that's new, new in the grand scheme of things, you know, if you're, if you're old school to Wellington, you know, it's, it's still a new sign. If there's a new sign across the street that doesn't meet regs, it causes problems, and I'm not saying that sign needs to be changed. I'm just pointing it out so that we're on top of things.
All right, so to be clear, we're talking about compliance signs here that you're proposing.
Exactly.
With, with opaque backgrounds, illuminated letters.
Exactly.
And, you know, what's going on across the street is a separate issue.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any questions or comments from the public?
Walter, Ralph, tell us here.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Um, with respect to Dunkin' Donuts sign, which one are we talking about? Are we talking about the stand on, the, the sign on the pole?
Yeah.
Be- because I specifically looked at that a couple of nights ago, when it was dark out. And the background, the only thing illuminated was a coffee cup and a text. Now, the opaque background, it may not be one hundred percent opaque, but it is definitely not a fully illuminated sign. It's just my observation, and I was involved in that project in, in reviewing the sign, signage proposed for that project way back when they got their special permit. So if, if that sign has deteriorated over time, then perhaps the commission can do something with the owner of that facility. Although quite frankly, their hours lately haven't extended much beyond dark anyway.
So very thanks. Thanks, Ralph.
Poorly run Dunkin' Donuts.
Thanks for the comments, Ralph.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions or comments from the public?
Um, Walter, just to comment on um some other signs that we've um approved, and those are the signs at the gas station along the uh fascia. I think the mobile and the Shell station.
Those, those were long ago, those have been there a long time.
But I think-
Those are not illuminated letters, if I recollect. I think the background's illuminated.
The background's illuminated, and-
I think so.
Okay.
I, I'd have to ride by it to recalibrate myself to nighttime there, but I, I, I'm not sure those are compliant.
There's not a lot of lighted signs in general.
They're rare in Wellington.
Yeah, and the ones that are out there, only a couple of them are opaque backgrounds.
You got a train sign on uh, on the heating place too, I think that's fully illuminated, I think. That, it's a rarity to see illuminated signs in Wellington, that's why they kind of stick in your head when you go by them.
Walter, can I interject again, some observations about signs? Being a long time resident of Wellington, Sunoco and Mobile both precede any sign regulations.
Thank you, Ralph.
As far as TA goes, that high-rise sign was forced upon the town of Wellington by a stipulated agreement. And essentially, the entire phil- facility is somewhat outside the regulations. We, we agreed to what they built as a consequence of a court settlement. So keep that in mind.
Thanks, Ralph, thanks for the background. But yeah, that, that's explains it, why those are non-compliant. Uh, any other uh questions or comments from the public? All right, uh, I, I do think this is gonna be a vast improvement on the, on the signage in that plaza, what's being proposed. That's gonna definitely make the businesses more recognizable, and it's gonna look good. All right, with that being said, with no more questions or comments, uh, gonna motion to close uh public hearing, PZ dash twenty-one dash thirteen.
So moved. So moved.
All uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, on to new business. So PZ twenty-one dash eleven, you're gonna try to put a motion together for the next meeting, Mike?
Yep, I'll have something for the next meeting.
By the way, I voted aye, I couldn't turn my mic on, sorry.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, so we'll move on to item B under new business, uh, PZ dash twenty-one dash thirteen, modification of special permit to add illumination to signage at eleven Phillips Way, applicant Greg Bristow, owner BTV Realty of Wellington LLC. Does the commission want to move on this tonight? I, I personally don't have an issue with doing it.
Oh, I have no issue with it.
I think we've pretty clear, you know, provided that the, you know, the sign meets the, uh, signs meet the regulations. Someone might want to take a shot at a motion? I can do it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve PZ twenty-one dash thirteen, modification of the special permit to allow to add illumination to signage at eleven Phillips Way. Applicant Greg Bristow, owner BTV Realty, Realty of Wellington LLC. Um, and the only condition is that it obviously meets uh, or in accordance with the zoning regulations for signs.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, congratulations. All right, item F. Unfinished business. These are the uh special permit renewals for uh, you know, PZ dash twenty-one dash six, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel, one eighty Talon Turnpike. Applicant Diane Becker, owner Hope Mountain LLC. Item B, PZ dash twenty-one dash seven, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel. At one seventy-one Talon Turnpike, applicant Diane Becker, owner Lawrence Becker. C, PZ dash twenty-one dash eight, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel at nine George Drive, applicant Diane Becker, owner Lawrence Becker. Item D, PZ dash twenty-one dash nine, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel at three twenty-eight Ruby Road, applicant Diane Becker, owner Ruby Associates General Partnership. Item E, PZ dash twenty-one dash three, section seven, point oh seven, point oh two, livestock and pulp. Oh, no, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Just, I just love that one. Okay, so we're on the ones for uh Becker. So we, uh, we closed the public hearing last time, so where, where's the commission at? The uh, any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Lori.
Um, Mike, I don't know if you saw the email I sent today.
I did not.
Okay, um. What, what defines an inactive site, and why if they have three sites that are inactive? Um. Why, why should they still be grandfathered for permits if they're inactive sites?
Um, so I can take a crack at it, and uh, the applicant can follow up. So from our perspective, eh, special permit, or in, in this case, um, a non-conforming use that's protected under statute, the, the use cannot be terminated unless we consider the intent of the property owner. And so um, there, the current activities on the property don't dictate to the town how we can treat that parcel, provided they are clear as to whether or not they intend to continue that use or not. Now, I suspect they'll, they'll elaborate on the actual active versus inactive as it relates to a quarry, and, and what needs to be approved at the state and, and other agencies. But from a strictly land use perspective, and I think Peter um will agree or disagree, we can't, we can't um sort of revoke that protection without their uh sort of agreement.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, for the record, Attorney Peter Alter, representing the applicants.
Go ahead.
Thank you, um. Mr. D'Amato has correctly stated what the law is, which is that unless uh an owner of illegally existing non-conforming use specifically demonstrates an intention to abandon that use, then the use is deemed to continue. Uh, by virtue of the fact that uh my client, uh each and every time a renewal application is required, has made that renewal application uh would demonstrate just the opposite, that there is no intention of abandoning any of these permits, and that we fully expect to keep them in full force and effect. Um. The commissioner's comment is, is perhaps not directly on point. Uh, obviously, the sites uh on the opposite sides of Talon Turnpike are very active um, on a daily basis, and have continued to be. Uh, the activities on, on the Ruby Road piece and on the, on the George Drive piece are less active, but that does not mean that uh the applicant has, or owner has abandoned the fully approved uses, so uh make no mistake about that. Uh, there has been no intention to abandon any of those permits or the uses that are protected.
All right, thanks for clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, any further uh questions from the commission on any of this? Okay, does the commission want to, you know, these, these are one-year permits, correct, Mike? Yearly?
Right, so if they, if they um come back next year and ask for a period of time greater than a year, we would have to um, hold a hearing, but you could do it next year, but this is only a one-year request.
Okay, just wanted to make that, clarify that. All right. I'm gonna make the motion.
So Walter, the only thing that if I could add, that, you know, it came-
Driveway, right? Wasn't there a question, wasn't there a question about the driveway as far as when that was gonna get done? I, John, I think had committed to getting it done.
So that would be the, so first, specifically twenty-one dash six, that's one eighty, you know, um. If he, and I don't know if he's here or, or wants to, of the uh, if, if Peter would like to elaborate. Um, if, if the commission might consider a condition that, that that driveway be, be paved or, or improved, or whatever the, the specs call for, basically, I would suggest October first, only because much later than that, you're dealing with plants that may close. I don't know if that creates some undue burden for the applicant, um, but that would be my suggestion, so that we don't deal with it through another season.
I believe we represented at the last session that that uh partial, part of that work has already been completed, and the balance will be completed uh in this construction season. So an October date is certainly a, uh, very appropriate.
For the minutes of the last meeting, John is expected to pave it by June twenty twenty-one after getting an extension from DOT. Eight hundred feet of driveway.
I, I would suggest maybe August first, since he's already said he plans to get it done by June, that gives him a little bit of time if there's any, um.
The weather and things like that.
Yeah, weather, or, you know, other issues, um, it doesn't hold him to June first, but then we're not holding it off all the way till October, I think August would be reasonable. Anybody else, any thoughts?
That's fine, I'd go along with that, August.
John's, I, I see him on the call, John, any comments on this, any, any concerns about that?
No, that's fine, we actually, the permit with the estate DOT expires June thirtieth, so that's fine.
All right. What's the piece of property the driveway's on?
One eighty.
One eighty. Talon Turn, okay. All right, I guess we can take a crack at a motion here, there's a lot of stuff to sum up with all the all the numbers here, all right, so gonna make a motion to approve uh special permit, PZ dash twenty-one dash six, that's the one for one eighty Talon Turnpike, with the stipulation that the driveway's finished by August first. Uh, also a motion to uh, to approve PZ twenty-one dash seven, PZ dash twenty-one dash eight, and PZ dash twenty-one dash nine. Special permit renewable in one year. And there goes my dog.
I'll second.
All right, did I hear a second?
Yes, that was Joel.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about this.
The dog likes it too.
Yeah, she's got a little excited.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's all said, so on to uh, on to item E. PZ dash twenty-one dash three, section seven point oh seven dot oh two, livestock and poultry of the Wellington zoning regulations, applicant Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission, and we continued from March second.
Um, are you entertaining comments or suggestions?
I, I'm, I got a couple of comments to make, uh. You know, we started out, the whole thing kind of started from a, from a complaint that the Historical Society had put in, you know, up near the town greens, so, you know, they-
Not the Historical Society, Historic District Commission.
Okay, so, sorry, Bob, didn't mean to insult you.
Don't throw me under the bus.
Okay. Okay, so that, the complaint, you know, sparked the discussion. Okay, so we decided to loosen up the regs a little after much discussion, and we had it down to the proposal that, that we had. And you know, obviously, that seemed to me, you know, anyway, to be a, a pretty good compromise, you know, for people that wanted to have fall and so forth. But you know, then at last meeting, I heard we, we were having discussions about like down all the way to a quarter an acre, you know, having hands stuffed in a little box, let the, you get like from guys that prep, you know, obviously, we're not gonna allow them to free range. So, I, I'm not quite sure where we're at at this point, after where we ended there, you know, my main concern is rodents, predators, you know, uh that, the usual, you know, and we can say what we want about roosters, but they're around, I hear them every weekend when I go for a walk, you know. I know we're not supposed to have them, so, you know, we say we're not supposed to have some of these things, and they're supposed to be in a in, in a box, and I know of free-ranging chickens in several areas of town, I see them all the time. Yeah, and, you know, even though I'm the chairman of zoning, I'm not going around looking to make a hard time for everybody that's trying to, you know, do something, but we make it too loose, it's gonna make it worse, in my opinion.
Well, I, if, if I might say something, I believe that if there's a problem, it's best addressed by the neighbors or people in the vicinity making a complaint. We're not gonna, you know, our regulations not, aren't gonna stick to everybody.
We also don't have the enforcement capability of dealing with every issue.
Right, I, I, I think the best we can do is tighten things up the way we did. I think by having uh no free range, that's going to stop quite a bit of it. It's going to allow more people to be able to keep a few birds. And if there's, if somebody's upset with something that's going on, you know, that's uh why we have the regulations to back us up, and if need be, um, I guess Mike goes on a road trip.
Um.
Correctly.
Yeah, right, with, with that, I, I just wanted to show you, if, I don't know if you saw it or not, but, but Ashley did work with the assessor's office to pull together some numbers for lot sizes in town, um, so you can get an idea of kind of who is affected by what. Um, so if you see here, the average lot size for all residential land, everything in Wellington is four point two nine acres. Um, and, and basically what it shows you is, um, of the eighteen hundred parcels, there are five hundred and forty-six that are under eighty thousand, and a hundred and twenty-five that are- under eighty thousand and a hundred and twenty-five that are under forty thousand. So you know, if we go from, if we go to that, to that number, it kind of lets you know what would be included and what would be excluded. So just to give you an idea, again, starting with the eighteen hundred total. If we, if we went to the eighty thousand, we'd be leaving out, like I said, the five hundred going down to forty thousand, basically leaves out a hundred and twenty-five parcels. So it's not a, it's not a massive percentage. And I know that the commission has discussed, you know, whether they want to reduce it further or leave it there. So I, you know, she pulled those numbers together and I think they kind of helped show kind of what we're dealing with.
Well, we did have several people who spoke towards to the issue that we should, you know, have more people allowed than fewer people allowed. And I'm just wondering if, if the same you know, if the same regulations so far from your property line and all of that apply, why couldn't we go to twenty thousand square feet, which is just under half an acre? That certainly seems you know, large enough to me for, I mean, I think they, they were talking about three, three birds for half an acre. I don't know if we want to add that, you know, I just, I mean, I do agree that it's, it's nice for people to be able to do this. I think if you have a really tiny lot that's, that's less than, I mean, a quarter an acre or something, I don't think you're going to keep the smell from your neighbors, you know, but I just would like us to consider that. I'm okay with the forty thousand square feet, but I'm trying to be sensitive to those who spoke at the last meeting.
I look, you know, these Zoom meetings and so forth, I know they're necessary evil with what's been going on. But I don't think we get the same amount of participation. We did not hear from what I would consider a lot of people. We heard from a handful of people. So I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm still stuck on the forty thousand.
Well, maybe I can kind of outline a little bit of the procedural stuff, which may make the decision easier for the commission. Because the hearing is closed and because we referred the current proposal to CROG. Statutorily, if you wanted to make a change that would make the regulation less restrictive, we would need to re, we need to refer to CROG. It's not a big deal. It doesn't cost the town any money. I'm just telling you. We can make the regulations more restrictive following a referral, but less restrictive has to go back. The only other thing that I would mention is when you're dealing with nonconformities, if we go to, if we go to forty thousand square feet and the commission, or let's say we go to twenty and the commission decides twenty isn't good, we're getting complaints, and then you go to forty. Anybody between twenty and forty at that point would then be grandfathered. So, so a large part of the reason why you may decide the twenty was too small and go to forty wouldn't be, that problem wouldn't be solved because they would have that nonconforming protection. On the contrary, if you start at forty and you evaluate a year later and decide you want to go down to thirty or twenty, you're relaxing those standards and allowing more people to be eligible, but you're not catching these people that are going to end up with some nonconformity that'll exist forever.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I like that.
I like the forty thousand, but I was just trying to be sensitive to those who, you know, spoke at the last meeting. But I like, I like that, that we go with what we've been talking about and then we can revisit it if we decide at a later date.
I'm willing to revisit it in a year just to see how things are going.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Walter.
Can I ask a question? Are there people right now who are in a situation where they're already grandfathered in with a smaller lot? Is that a situation right now or no?
No, because our regulations right now are stricter. They're a larger lot size.
Let's, let's be honest, John, there's probably quite a few people that have chickens in town. And if they're not bothering anybody, you're probably not hearing about them. The things we seem to hear about are roosters. Or if somebody has an excessive amount of excessively sized flock just running around or that sort of thing.
The rooster question brings up another point for me. What do we do about enforcement in situations like that? I know that there's a rooster out near me. I can hear him during the day.
Yeah, I hear him over here.
Not that it bothers me. I'm not going to complain, but what is the enforcement mechanism if somebody did want to complain?
They submit a complaint in writing to us. We have a form on the website. We have probably, I don't know, we have, we have a few complaints related to chickens and roosters, which is why this whole thing started for the commission that we've basically been pausing because we, we don't know how this was all going to shake out and we don't want to pursue, say, this is in compliance or this is in violation. And then so there will be a few people that we need to follow up with once the commission issues the decision on this to say, this is how the regs fell, this is what applies to you. But, you know, for roosters or those types of things, because they're prohibited now, they wouldn't get any of that grandfathering protection because they, they didn't have it lawfully.
Unless they have five acres or more.
Yes.
Correct.
All right, any, anybody else have questions or comments on this?
No, I'm good with the forty thousand.
Yeah, me too.
Me too. And we can revisit in a year and see how it's going and just see if the complaints have gone up or anything. I do have concern, like, you know, on real small lots with rodents and things like that. And, you know, some people keep their things meticulous like animals and everything and you wouldn't have the issue.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's like anything else.
Well, um, am I, I'm unmuted. I move that we approve PZ twenty dash twenty-one dash three, section seven point zero seven point zero two livestock and poultry of the Wellington zoning regulations.
I'll second that.
And we just set an effective date, I would suggest, based on publication, the effective date of May first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Friendly amendment accepted.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, this one, that was a long, long one. So we'll see how it goes. All right, approval of minutes. The minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I move to accept the minutes of March sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Lori Semperban.
Second to John, Diane.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, correspondence. Anything, Mike?
Nope, I just, I guess I, no, I'll wait till staff report. I don't have any, any correspondence.
Okay. I, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Anyone from the public? Okay, it's not tonight. Item J, staff report and discussion. Item A, South Wellington Regulations Update.
So I just wanted to keep everybody in the loop. The Economic Development Commission is basically going to be holding a, they're going to do a little bit of a sort of an outreach, public information session on the regs and try to interface with some of the businesses there and talk about the sidewalk project that the town is doing in conjunction with the Board of Selectments. So that's going to hopefully happen in May. So, and then it'll come before the, before the commission. The only other thing that I would, I would mention, I mentioned before, is related to Loves. We've, the RFP or RFQ for the Clerk of the Works position is currently with the attorneys, is with Howam Sage, to just do a quick review to make sure we're covered, didn't miss anything, and then it will go out to, I mean, it'll be on the website and it'll just go out to whoever is capable, qualified firm to do those inspections. So the town will have to then make that selection and enter into an agreement with Loves to perform those inspections as required by both the wetlands and the planning and zoning approvals.
Have they expressed when they want to begin construction?
Last time I heard from their attorney was in maybe early March, late February, and they were targeting May. We don't have building permits or administrative staff permits yet that have been submitted. I do have like a final plan set that they provided to me, following everything that they did at the state. But we don't have applications, so maybe mid-May, I mean, by the time they get all that stuff done, but they want to take advantage of the construction season.
Anything else?
Not that I can think of. We got the, the Affordable Housing Plan Extension approved, and that's all situated with the Department of Housing, so we'll have until the end of the calendar year to get that taken care of. So we'll be dealing with that once we get all this other stuff that's in the hopper taken care of, I guess. And the only other thing that, that I'll mention, some of you may have seen through other meetings and boards and commissions in town here. The town now does have technology that was acquired through a grant to facilitate hybrid meetings. So there is a system up in the large meeting room in Town Hall that, that has a TV and a camera and mic and it's wireless, and so it can provide for both of those to be, you know, so we can accommodate virtual participants and in-person participants. So if we get to a point later in the, later in the year where we can go back to in-person meetings, we'll be able to accommodate those who don't feel comfortable doing so. We're really limited because our room is small, so we're still going to have to do the six-foot distance. And because this is a large commission, we are going to not really have much room for people, for just people that want to watch and participate. So we're trying to work through those details, but the technology is in town, so we're getting closer.
Okay. All right, anything else from anyone? All right, let's see, it is eight thirty-five PM, meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.